Yeah, we had an rain.
Okay, just before we get started tonight, obviously, we have all new microphones. I wanted to make you aware that these are area microphones, so you don't have to sit on top of them to be heard like I'm doing right now. You can sit back and everybody, you know, will still pick you up throughout. Camera up on the wall, we are going to be videotaping this. So just relax and what I would say is pull it down just a little bit. Cause that's all, not sure who did this. All this sticking straight up.
Yeah.
So I'll fix that later.
Somebody really tall.
Yeah.
Nice.
And another thing, these monitors are a little bit higher than you're used to. So if you're speaking to somebody, you know, you can maybe sit up just a little bit so that they can see you directly.
I feel like I'm Wilson from.
I know, right?
At least chairs.
My chair was already a little bit up.
I'm already short.
Alright, can everybody hear okay then? I think these mics are working pretty good.
Yeah.
Are you gonna dial Christine or we good?
Um, yeah, let me, let me.
We'll wait for her to be dialed on and we'll get started.
And put her on speakerphone, she's driving right now, but.
Well, then we don't want to get her too upset.
Hey Chrissy, how are you?
Let me just give her a mic.
I am, I am getting coffee from Ranger, I am free now.
Okay, um, well, I'm putting you on, uh, speakerphone right now, so if you wanna.
Get your own mic.
I can do that.
Okay, so I'm good.
That's great.
Isn't technology wonderful? Alright. I'm sorry, she says she's good to go or she wants us to wait a moment?
She's, she's gonna mute you while she.
Okay, perfect.
As her mother thing.
Ready?
Ready?
Alright. Okay, we're gonna call this meeting to order. We have the September nineteenth, twenty twenty four, meeting of the Cecil Township Planning Commission called to order at seven oh three. First item on the agenda is the approval minutes from the August fifteenth meeting. Everybody have an opportunity to review the minutes, they are rather extensive this time around. Extremely well done, too.
It's a group effort.
Yeah.
Wow, ten thirty. I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the August fifteenth, twenty twenty four, meeting.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved. Okay, next item on the agenda is the review of previous decisions. Jack or Dandy have anything to news for us from the board of supervisors?
I don't think we had any plans last month.
No.
Dan, you gotta talk to your microphone.
I'm sorry, there were no, you told me to catch everything, Jack. There were no plans acted upon last month at the supervisor's meeting, so nothing.
Okay, yeah, we put a fair amount in front of them, so. There's a lot going on. Okay, there is no old business, so we'll just move on to new business. First item on the agenda is application two zero two four dash zero zero two zero, Green Consolidation Plan, applicant Jeremy Green.
Uh, Mr. and Mrs. Green are in the audience tonight. Um, a, a simple, uh, subdivision, but I think Dan can articulate a little more.
Yeah, this is just a duplex in Muse where they're combining the properties to make it one property. Uh, and it's a simple plan. Uh, we had a letter dated August twenty ninth. We had some minor comments, all of these are just housekeeping things. Uh, the surveyor that submitted the plan is somebody who's not familiar with our standards, so this isn't unusual to have this. So we sent the letter out, did your surveyor get this letter? We sent it to you guys, too?
Uh, not completely positive, I didn't get an email from that.
Um, I think we s- I th- you didn't get an email or you didn't get this letter either? Okay, are you, um, it, it looks like L. Derco, L dot Derco?
That's the property owner.
Oh, okay.
I'm the prospective buyer.
So Jeremy Green.
That is me.
Okay, oh, you're, okay, we would have mailed this to Mohawk Road? That was the address that we had for you. McDonald?
Yeah.
Okay, and we sent it to your surveyor.
Okay.
So I'll be glad to give you this letter if you want to get it, but I would just recommend you may call your surveyor. Make sure he takes care of these five simple comments and gets us a revised plan and it can be on the supervisor's agenda for approval.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Does that have to go through another monthly meeting?
No, well, it depends on what this board says here, but I'm gonna advise them and it's simple enough that we'll make sure that these are taken care of. These are taken care of before it goes, it has to be done before the first Monday in October, which the supervisors will act on the plan.
Okay.
So just, again, these are, if you, if, just make sure he, I know he has the letter.
I will PDF it to him.
Yeah.
Tonight.
Yeah.
And make sure that's taken care of.
They're just, they're just all housekeeping items. So I would recommend if you're, if you're in, thinking about it, it's, it's, it's fine, we'll make sure it happens.
Did you guys, you received that, didn't you?
Yeah, we got it by email.
We got it via email, yeah.
And actually, I wanted to look.
Actually, I sent it out early, August twenty eighth, that's a long time ago.
Yeah, it went out. What's the date of the letter?
It was August twenty ninth when we received it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you're, I don't wanna blast your email out on, on the public forum here, but I believe your email is on here.
It ends in two zero five four.
Yeah.
I got, I got an email that was, um, attached to about twelve or fifteen other attachments, but it didn't have this on it.
Oh, okay, I, I see it, I see it on there, um, attached on the version I received.
Okay.
Uh, and, and I, I see you on it, so. Yeah, it could just be a.
Again, it's very, they're very, they're very minor comments. It's just, they're just cleanup things that are required by our ordinance to be shown on the plan. And again, the first time somebody submits a plan, that typically happens.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's some very minor.
Dimensions, yeah.
Yeah. Minor stuff.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments from commissioners?
Are, are you going to renovate the place to make it one house?
I, that's my, that's my plan, yes.
Okay, so that, yeah, you're jumping ahead to do that by taking the line out.
Well, cause I, I can't, I don't have the funds to get a mortgage on two separate parcels.
Right.
So to get both sides of the property as it is, I have to get a consolidation plan to make it one property.
Right.
So I can get a first time homebuyer's loan, so I don't have to have a first time homebuyer's loan and then an investment loan where I have to put down almost thirty percent.
Right.
Like I just, I, it doesn't, that doesn't work.
But, but is your intent to make it a single family home or are you just gonna do your renovations and then put the line back in or, or do it, rent it as a duplex?
I'm gonna keep it for the, for, as much as this has cost me, I'm gonna keep it forever.
Okay, yeah.
It's gonna be a first time homebuyer's and not my only home, but I wanna make it my single family home for the next twenty years.
Well, it's good to see people invest in a Muse.
Yeah.
That's good.
Very good.
Yeah.
I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna go through this ever again.
Do it right, do it once, there you go, that's it.
Correct, yes.
And if there's no questions or comments, do we have a motion?
I move to approve application number two zero two four zero zero two zero, Green Consolidation Plan. Um, upon fulfillment of all the recommendations of the Gateway Engineers' letter dated August twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty four.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carrie's?
What was the date that had to be submitted by, I'm sorry.
If you can have him get it to us by the end of, what's the end of next week?
That's the twenty fifth.
Twenty seventh.
Twenty, yeah, twenty seventh.
Well, festivals that weekend.
Yeah.
Just reminding you.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'd have him, like, have it to us by the twenty third, cause the agenda goes out during that middle of that week, Wednesday, so make sure it gets to us before then.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, not a problem. Good luck.
I appreciate it.
Yes.
Alright, next item on the agenda is application two zero two four dash zero zero two five, Keystone seventy six rezoning request.
Thank you for letting me speak today, my name's Chris Oak, um, I've been developing for about, one more here.
Yeah.
I've been developing for about ten years. My partner, Dick Harrington, great man, he's been developing for about thirty-five years and, uh, and we've been developing together and we're really excited to be here in, uh, in Cecil Township. Just to, we have this, this, um, property here, Five Kuma Road, it's on the corner of Glass Hill Road and Kuma Road, um, under agreement. And one of the exciting things about this piece of property is there's multiple access points to this property, it's about four or five different access points. Makes it an exciting opportunity for development. Um, currently, this property is zoned as R one low density residential. And in the, in the most recent comprehensive master plan that you guys have approved, um, there is an opportunity for mixed use residential underneath that plan. And so we are requesting, um, through this process to be able to rezone this from R one to M U R, mixed use residential.
And I'll just, I, I've obviously had some discussions with these guys, they've, they've done some due diligence on the, on the property. Uh, Chris is correct that the comprehensive plan did identify this property. I think I gave everybody a copy of the future land use map in the letter that we sent out. Uh, but, uh, the, the thing that they'll have to do, I, I, the, the whole goal of the mixed use neighborhoods was that we wouldn't be rezoning properties, doing PRDs. The idea would be that we would get development, encourage development in the right places and that they would have to bring the infrastructure to them. In this case, they, you can see the sanitary, or, or you can see the township park down below Glass Hill. They're gonna have to bring the sanitary sewer all the way up the hill. Once they bring the, the sanitary sewer up the hill for the municipal authority, they'll be able to service their property, but that's also gonna open the area up to at least future development on some of the parcels up there. And as Chris had mentioned, there's multiple access points here, uh, which is unusual when the township, we're usually fighting with a single township, country road somewhere. So I, I think the thing is ideally set up. Your layout's about a hundred lots?
About approximately, and, and the great thing, too, is you have Cowden Road that goes right kind of through the middle, so there's gonna be multiple entry points into the development.
Yeah.
As well, so it's really gonna, you know, a lot of times you can, like Dan was talking about, some of these developments, there's only one way in, one way out, and you gotta widen the road or it's, it's challenging. With that road going through that, that piece there on the, on the right side of your, as we're looking at the survey, um, it presents some exciting opportunities to have different means of ingress and egress.
And so in the M U R, they're gonna have to do some mix of at least two different types of, of residential units. So they'll probably, it's gonna be almost mostly, mostly singles, but they'll be, I think there's some towns laid out on the right side of Cowden Road.
There's some towns on the, on Cowden Road.
Yeah, on the right side, on the flat side, apart as, on the top of the hill there. So I, I prepared a letter, there was real, I just, on rezoning matters, I really don't have an opinion, it's just, we just look at the application administratively. The application was complete, I just asked them to label a couple other roads on the plan and.
We did that, Dan.
Yeah.
We sent that off yesterday.
And, and basically, the, the supervisors would take your recommendation and then they would set up a public hearing for the rezoning.
And this is part of the, the future land use map that was approved under the comprehensive plan. This was envisioned to be that mixed use.
Yes.
And transitioned over from the R one designation that it is now.
Right.
And that was approved in, the comprehensive plan was approved in twenty twenty-three?
What's the date on it, Jack, twenty?
Okay.
Twenty twenty-three, yeah, okay.
And is this the first?
This is the first, yeah, so what happened was after the board approved the comprehensive plan, they brought forth, uh, one property that went to S D, one property that went to Commercial, the Fuchs Farm. And then I think there was one other piece that got rezoned by the, that was recommended by the board of supervisors to you guys, and then it ultimately did get.
Okay.
Rezoned, so they've been putting off the M U R, M U C issue mostly because of the gas ordinance, so they've, it's sort of taken a sidestep to that. And in fact, if, this property probably would have already been rezoned to what it, they're proposing, but they wanna move fast, so they're not gonna wait around for the township. So they can, on a rezoning, either an applicant can bring it forth, the township can, can rezone property. It works both ways.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're looking. You said townhouse is along Cowden Road?
That's still in the works, but yeah, that's what it's kinda looking right now, townhomes, we have to do up to ten percent of, uh, second product for the ordinance. Um, and so there would be some townhomes along that side over there by, along Cowden Road, not along the road, but maybe in, in a road coming off that, and the rest would be singles.
And there's no units that face on an existing road, all the, the road system circulates in, in here or off the roads that exist, so it'll be really nice, really private.
Really excited about it, it's gonna be nice.
And, and this is your desire to have the mixed, uh, the, the second product in there, or?
I think, I think it makes for an exciting, and I, I'm excited to go through this, be the first ones to do it, right, and, and bring this to the, to the township. I think that, you know, this has been something that has been discussed a lot and approved, and I think that to be the first ones would be pretty neat. And so, yes, I, I like the idea of having two different products, and, and that our partner that we're talking with, um, the home builder, is excited about it as well.
Barbara, do you have any thoughts or concerns on it? Questions?
No.
Lauren?
Dan, what's, what's the relief of the property like? I mean, I mean.
What, topographically?
Yeah, yeah.
So it's, 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 there's, the area is.
Slipping down to the Montour Trail?
Yeah, the area is farmed, obviously, on the top, and then it descends pretty rapidly down to the Montour Trail. So most of their development's gonna be right up at the top of the slope. And that's, I mean, it's out of the hundred acre, or what is it, how many acres is it?
Sixty-four acres.
Okay, you're probably only developing thirty.
Right.
Probably only doing half, except down over the hill will be a storm detention pond.
Yeah.
And then the, the major part on the, a bunch of trail will stay woods and the whole right side, probably sixty percent of the, the woods, but we won't have any slopes envisioned over a thirty foot cut. Mostly, the preliminary drawings I'm working on are just maximum twenty, twenty-five foot slopes, it's, it's beautiful piece of ground for residential.
And they'll have the opportunity, if they can convince the trail, to give them a connection to the trail from the plan.
Right, so you, you don't have any concern that, uh, of slope, I mean, I know we're not into the details yet, but any kind of slope stability issues that would face down into the, the, that's the, the park to the north, then?
Well, the park's on the other side of the creek, I mean, the trail is before that.
Okay.
So no, I, I, I mean, it's, it's typical Western P A, I mean, they'll, they'll have Geotech and everything else that needs, needs to be done.
Kind of runoff and flooding and.
Yes.
Through detention base and design.
Well, they're, they're gonna have to deal with the trail on the pond discharge, too, but there's actually a large water course, like, right through the bend, right through the bend in the, in the trail there.
Okay.
There's a big water course.
Where you, where you pointing, I can point.
Yeah, it goes right, right through there.
Okay.
It will drain, drain the, the pond, right?
Yeah, I'm fairly, fairly.
And that's directly into Miller's Run.
Okay.
This is unique in the, well, the seven major developments I've done and with Chris and I have been working together since two thousand and eighteen. No stream crossing you have to do for any of the housing plans. That's really unique.
So I know that I have a, a couple questions or, and, and I'm gonna use the word concerns, I don't know if it's really concerns, just a, but, just a couple thoughts, maybe, maybe the best way to say. You know, I, I, I think, you know, I, I can't speak for the board of supervisors, but I know that they're very protective of, of Cecil Park. And, and the, um, the, the rural nature, uh, of that park, so.
Beautiful park.
Yeah, I, I think they're gonna, um, you know, wanna make sure that that hillside stays preserved, um, and, and gives that, that green space and, um, you know, has that, has that large buffer between, um.
We want the same, so absolutely.
And the development.
I agree totally, and if you looked at our plan over Lafayette Meadow, which is just completed, our buffers are included in each developer has at all my seminars, Hickory Heights is my first plan. Trees everywhere are very important to us, and the whole low side against the trail will be just remaining all woods. It's, it, and, I mean, the, the M U R plan, you have to follow the planned development regulations, which also has a fifty foot buffer around the entire property. So that, even up here where there's housing, there'll be the fifty foot buffer maintained.
In, in, in reference to Lafayette Meadow, if you go look at that one in South Fayette, our last development, um, we've tried to leave as much natural as possible. I mean, there's some areas you have to clear, you're prepared for, you know, especially here for like ponds, upper part, but the majority of that, we're gonna try to keep as natural as we can. So the buffer and, uh, but just to kinda answer your question and try to resolve your concerns, we wanna keep this place as beautiful as possible, cause we want people to come here. Homes and wanna be.
I, I appreciate that. Um, I, I think the placement of the pond, uh, if, if you're still, obviously, you know, you're real early into the, into this, um, you know, keeping the pond as far up. Yeah, so that it's knocked down adjacent to the trail.
Oh, no, they'll be, they'll, preliminary, they're way up.
Yeah.
And it, that depends on the size that, that the engineers determine, so there's, you know, place for smaller ponds on the other side, anything that can be, keep it a smaller project.
Yeah, that's kinda where my head's at, I, so I'm.
We'll note that, too, because we wanna make sure that you guys are, we wanna make you happy, we want this to be, you know, a development that we can be proud of, so we'll note that and make sure that's at the front of our minds as we go through the planning and design.
I mean, I'm a civil engineer, so I tend to get into the weeds and, and start to look at, at the development, and I know we're not there yet, but I know that we've had a lot of issues in front of this planning commission and our board of flooding issues, where we've had new developments go in uphill or up gradient of areas that are either older or undeveloped or even previously developed that have been flooded out during the heavy rainfalls that we got. So, so my sensitivity is, is development uphill and then not taking care of the downstream, uh, you know, people that are, you know, enjoying the trail, enjoying the park. Uh, so any treatment train that we could develop, and I know this is obviously Gateways, uh, you know, when they review the plans as we get farther into that, but I'm, I'm sensitive to stormwater based on some of the, the, the issues that have been presented to us over the last just several months, where people have shown us their backyards being flooded out with these increased rainfalls that we're having, for whatever reason you wanna believe, uh, that we have increased rainfall. So that's my only sensitivity when you develop on top of a hill and looking what's down below you existing and, and those amenities or those areas that people enjoy, that we're not developing something really nice, and I believe it'll be really nice, but then, but then doing so despite something else that's being enjoyed by folks in the town.
No, absolutely, I totally agree with you, we, we wouldn't wanna do that, we're gonna follow every single bit of, of, of requirement and every direction from our engineers, rest assured.
Yeah, I mean, the park is already, uh, subject to substantial flooding, uh, and, and significant rainfall events, uh, for, for a variety of reasons. And so anything that's gonna add to the already burdened, um, stream bed there would, would be problematic. But, uh, I, I guess the, the, the other concern I have, not so much the development and the plan, back to specific to the rezoning. Is one, in the, in the future land, land use, for whatever reason, that, that actual parcel was actually, um, noted on the future land use map for mixed use commercial and not for mixed use residential, uh, while the, the property across, um, Kuma Road from, from that property that, the, the, down here. This is zoned for mixed, uh, on a mixed, on a future land use map, they're looking at this for a mixed use residential, and that parcel specifically mixed use commercial. I, I don't know how much of a issue that would be for the board of supervisors, uh, but the, the other part of that that, that ties in with that is, you know, we're right now looking at putting mixed use commercial, mixed use residential out on Rising Road, right? And, uh, a- as, as I understand it, as it was presented to, um, a- as it was presented to us, was that the board of supervisors wished to use Rising Road area as essentially a test to see how this was, you know, cause it's, it's a new, it's a new zoning for us, this mixed use residential, mixed use commercial. Uh, so we're excited for the idea of something new to, to see how it works, but it's, um, I don't know how the board of supervisors is gonna feel about that, the, the first test of it is gonna be over here, whenever they chose.
Sure. Dan, do you have, do you have any response, do you have any thoughts on that? I don't know what they're thinking, but you may.
Well, as it relates to, I remember, remember, the future land use guy, map is a guide.
Sure.
The intensity of an M U R versus an M U C is less. This property is only sixty acres. It couldn't support, you know, the only difference with the M U C is it allows you to create a small area for a restaurant or whatever, whatever type, you know, a small group of convenience commercial stuff. So when, when, when they were going through and, and discussing this mixed use commercial, they didn't know how people were going to be able to assemble property. So I think this came mixed use commercial because of the availability of access from multiple roads. And, but, but it's only a single piece, it's not big enough, a hundred homes aren't big enough to support, uh, an entire development. So I think it's the appropriate use and, and, you know, that, that's the key. I mean, it, it doesn't make sense here, it's zoned, single family residential, all you're really doing is, is when you rezone it to M U R, you're allowing, uh, less of an environmental impact, because the lots are smaller, less street. To create R one lots, right? So you're having, you're giving, you're giving the developer what people want, which is a more intensely, you know, like a more intense development, more density in a certain area, uh, without, you know. So that, that's why, that's why I see this as an advantage, it's better than the, what's the other one, the cluster one, which is always con- is complicated.
Trying to get rid of that.
Yeah, the board, the board and you guys came up with this ordinance really to say, okay, we're sick of PRDs, let's tell people what we want and, and this is what, you know, we should do. I, I mean, I think it, I think it fits perfectly and, uh, you know, I, I, you know, just in, and, and the, the one supervisor that I know that's heard about it being on the agenda tonight was his position was we should have already done this, we should have already had this rezoned.
And this gives the opportunity for more green space as part of a, a, a larger development, which is something that we didn't have in the past. We, or we didn't have the ability to ask for that to be part of it.
Yeah, and I don't disagree that, that, I mean, when I look at that future land use map, I, I know that that was some of those later meetings, uh, the, the last few meetings of that.
There was negotiations going on.
Steering, yeah, steering committee and, and those were, there were a few meetings towards the end that, uh, that for work purposes, I wasn't able to attend, and I know I showed up to a meeting one. Who drew these lines? I, I, I know I asked that question, and I, I look at it now and I agree with you, I think, um, mixed use residential makes more sense than mixed use commercial.
Right.
So that, that's my personal opinion, but that's, doesn't change what was approved by the board of supervisors. Um, so that's why I, I brought that up. I know it's, it's, it's flexible and it's, it's a, it's a conceptual plan that, that's providing guidance, but it's not set in stone.
No, absolutely, yeah.
But, um, you know, I, I still look at the, um, you know, the, the idea, the direction from the board of supervisors, they're looking at Rising Road with the M U C and the M U R as, you know, let's do it out here, let's rezone this, this, these properties on Rising Road and let's see how it goes.
Yeah, unfortunately, there, the property is this, it's, it's so difficult to develop.
I understand. I understand.
Yeah, there's, I mean, the slopes and the, and everything else. This is, this is much nicer property, just lends itself more to this. And, and again, you know, like you, there, the thought was the Cowden Farm is the biggest piece of real estate left in the community, right? Assembled as 500 acres. Who knows what's gonna happen to it? But, you know, that's where you could envision maybe like a, you know, 500, you know, there might, that might be a 300 or 400 unit development if they could put it together and have supporting commercial with it. And if these places were here, if there was another 100 or so lots here, it's just another cluster within the township that could be potentially developed.
I think Christie got disconnected. Jack, if you wanna go check the, see if she's still on. She was texting me, she's like, can you, can you hear my eyes? And I'm like, well, I just assumed. Sorry. I just wanted to make sure she was still there.
Yeah, no, because honestly, I.
Because we should ask her if she has any thoughts.
Yeah, yeah, because she was, I didn't hear her speaking up and I didn't ask.
She was on mute because she was getting to a place where she could talk.
Right, okay. So, so yeah, I mean, that's not, those are the thoughts that I have and I don't, you know, expect you to have answers or responses for those things. I'm just thinking out loud and thinking in the process. You know, it's the due diligence to make sure that we're making a good decision, a good recommendation. That's the best for our township, so.
And if we get the favor of the commissioners and present in the process, we come first view with a sketch plan.
Yeah, you'd come back to us with a site plan and the engineering and all the other, other stuff, yeah.
I'm here, Jason and all, I apologize. I just wanted to make sure I had voted aye on the minutes and on the first motion for green. So, I, I didn't know if it was muted or not, but I wanted to make sure that it was on public record for that.
Thank you.
I got you.
We did not hear you, but it is gonna be noted, yes.
Thank you.
Do you have any, I, I'm assuming that you got a chance to review the Keystone 76 rezoning request. Do you have any thoughts or questions regarding it?
I would just, it, it sounds like they're really considering all of the things that I would be concerned about as far as making sure they're being considerate of their neighbors and of the township and particularly the park. So, I don't have any additional questions from what they have shared already.
Okay, thank you. Well, Barbara, do you have any, I mean, this, this is our chance to discuss. Or someone can make a motion if they feel strongly, you know, about it one way or the other, make a motion to approve or deny, or to recommend for approval, recommend for denial really, since we're just a recommending body here. But do you, you know, Lauren, Christie and Barbara, do you have any, any other thoughts or questions on it? Do we wanna discuss it more, does somebody wanna make a motion on it?
I'm just trying to catch up with my notes.
Yeah, no, I.
I feel comfortable with the discussion we had and the responses from the applicants.
Yeah, I, I think the, this is kinda a 30,000-foot look at things. And I think the devil's gonna be in the details here. The questions aren't so much about the zoning. You know, there are some questions about the zoning, but I think the, the bigger questions a lot of people, a lot of us are having right now that's going on in our heads are, we're kinda getting ahead of ourselves and, and our concerns are with what's it gonna look like? And is it gonna detract from the beauty of Cecil Park considering that's abutting that, that property?
8,000 abut the property. The Montour Trail abuts the park. And, and below the Montour Trail, if you look at the aerial map, there's, there's preservation of trees that are never gonna be disturbed along the trail to, towards the park side. And then if you look above that, these guys can't touch these slopes all the way down here. They'll never be down over this hill. They zero out way up on top of the hill. In fact, Dick, there's a gas line easement there, right?
No, electric.
Electric line, so you're, you're, your slopes kinda zero out before that or just way before that?
There used to be a pipeline in there along with that.
Yeah, so just, just envision that amount of trees is, is at least going to stay as a, as a minimum.
Absolutely.
Plus, plus more. So, I, I don't, and, and the stormwater impact, I mean, they're, I, I keep telling these guys, I go, you're, you haven't dealt with the Montour Trail. They gotta deal with the trail on multiple stuff. The trail, trail is, no one watches their Ps and Qs and they, they look at everything very, very, very importantly. Plus, they're gonna need a crossing on the trail for the sanitary sewer. They're gonna need to bore underneath there. Probably gonna have to get a license for that from the, from the trail to get the, even get the sanitary sewer up there, so.
Yeah, that's.
That's another layer. I, I guess that's another layer of, once we get into the land development side, there'll be another layer of protection from the trail on all that.
Yeah, you know, I know that, that, the, the underpass there for Glass Hill Road under the Montour Trail, that's always been a problematic underpass. And if we're gonna be, it's another thing as a township we should be looking at and working with the Montour Trail on. If we're gonna start developing up on top of Glass Hill Road, up on top of that hill, you know, we, we probably should be taking a very strong look at that under, at that underpass and possibly completely reconstructing that in order to allow a proper flow and safe flow of traffic. What's that?
That's the railroad. You're not gonna change that.
I mean, it can be rebuilt, it can be widened, it can be, I mean, you're not gonna, there's a bridge there for the trail to go over it, but, you know, right now it's, you know, it's a single lane really underneath there, right? And it's possibly two cars, but it'd be very tight and it's, it's an odd angle. You can't drive straight through it, so. Again, if we're gonna start developing up on top, that's something that we have to look at in order to preserve, you know, or to ensure the safety of our residents.
Yeah, and I think that's, that presents an opportunity too because the, I, I don't, I don't think, there's not a railroad over there anymore, is there, on that piece?
No, the date, I mean, it's.
It's the trail.
It's the trail.
It's the trails, the trails crossing.
Right, right.
So, they've upgraded other crossings in the past, they get DCNR money. I mean, there's, there's opportunity. When, when we get into this, who knows what they'll, what they'll say.
Yeah, I think, I think in the past with it, you know, you got, you know, it was Bob and Elizabeth and, and Bob McCulsky and, and maybe two or three other people went up and down that hill. So, you know, no one's too concerned about, about the, the narrow underpass and the, and the odd angle that you pass through it at. But if we're looking at putting a development up there, then that, that changes that discussion.
Right.
So, just trying to think it all through. Anybody have any, and Lauren's still.
He's running out of room, he's running out of room.
I was trying to capture everything. I'm not, I'm not usually the note taker, I'm missing Dave here, so I don't know what it, I mean.
Well.
Trying to make sure I got everything, for the record.
Any of these concerns that we discussed, they would be just as applicable to an MUC, so.
Sure.
Or an R1.
Or an R1.
If there's any development up there, they.
And so, the reason I'm, I'm taking all this down is I think whatever decision we make, I wanna have all this stuff down so that when we finalize our minutes, the board has them.
Yeah.
That's where my head's at.
They have our thoughts, they have our concerns.
Uh huh, similar to what we did last month with the ordinance.
So, I mean, I, I agree. So, so does anybody have a motion? Does somebody wanna make a motion for the issue?
I mean, well, just thinking it through, I, I personally don't have strong feelings one way or another for an MUC there or an MUR. So, I don't think there are any particular objections to have it rezoned to an MUR if that's what works better for the piece of property. So, saying that, I would, I would say I move to approve application number 2024-0025, Keystone 76 rezoning request in accordance with the comments in, to be fulfilled in the Gateway Engineers letter dated August 17th, 2024.
And with the additional concerns as noted?
With the additional concerns as noted.
Well, yeah, so that's my, or I was gonna, I was gonna second the motion, but I was gonna do so in, with all of the notes that we've taken related to our concerns on stormwater, protection of the downstream areas, the park, the trail, certainly things that we'll get into later, but all the notes that we've taken today related to the, the, you know, the existing area and, 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 and the commitments that Mr. Hoke and Mr. Harrington have made, being here this evening.
Motion as amended to be approved.
And seconded?
Seconded.
Yes. All right.
I'm sorry.
We have a, a motion to recommend for, for approval for rezoning and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
We heard you, Christie.
There you go.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I, I'm, I'm excited to see what, what comes forward from it.
Appreciate your, your passion.
So, at the October, at the October meeting, the Board of Supervisors will set it, set a public hearing probably for the November meeting, for the public hearing on the rezoning.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
And then we'll work on a sketch plan for next time when we see you.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, that'll work, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, have a great night, thank you.
See ya.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is discussion. Jack, Dan, Lauren, Christie, Barbara, anybody have anything that they wish to discuss? Mr. Green?
I do.
Okay.
One up here.
He'd like you to step up to the mic, please.
So, it just says all revisions must be submitted to the township hard copy electronic form should be submitted to the township engineer. I'm just wondering how many copies of a hard paper copy and/or how I do submit the electronic form to the township engineer.
You should have my email address from when we sent you the letter. Did you find the email?
I did, actually, yes.
Okay, so just return it to that email. Whoever sent it to you should be, sasberry@gatewayengineers?
I believe so.
Yeah, that's what it was.
How many hard copies?
Jack, I don't know that we, I, I think Liz just takes one back, doesn't she? We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna need a reproducible anyway because the plan has to be signed and then it gets recorded.
Okay.
So, really just if you get the revisions done, just electronically submit them so we have them, we can put them up for the supervisors at the meeting.
Okay.
When those changes are made, they'll approve it and then we'll, you bring the, you'll bring the hard copy from your engineer, a, a paper copy that can be signed, and then Jack and Liz will get all the signatures on it.
And then do I have to be here for the supervisory?
Yes, I would advise you be here.
What would?
First Monday in October.
The first Monday in October?
Yep, 7 o'clock.
Okay.
Which is?
October 1st, I think.
I think, yeah.
Yeah, it's, is it?
No, no, it's October 7th.
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 And the 1st is a Tuesday.
Yeah. We'll all get an extra week this month.
Get a little reprieve, get a little pre-proof. So, yeah, October 7th.
Awesome, thank you guys so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, just to, my, I was, I was out of time and not, not of my mind. So, previous approvals, the board in September did approve the conditional use application for 600, 6,000 Town Center Boulevard. That was the conversion.
Conversion of the office space to apartments.
They also approved the Gillespie subdivision.
I thought they might have.
Yeah, I'm sorry. And then the Liberty Grove plan, which was that one.
Yep, Alan Rank's.
Yeah, Alan Rank's.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Thanks for waiting.
Last but certainly not least, Mr. Gazvota.
I know you guys are recommending body, but I, I wanna know what your clarification or, or what your findings were towards the ordinances? What's your recommendations or has it been made public or?
Well, we, we discussed them pretty openly at the, the last meeting. It said that the minutes on it were pretty extensive.
Right here.
Yeah, so it, it's part of the public record what we thought, but that was our review of what was placed before us at that point in time. As, as I'm sure you're aware by now, the Board of Supervisors chose to go a different direction.
Right.
Basically, so, so they didn't move forward with what they put in front of us, which we gave feedback on, they went a different direction with it, so, and that, that's.
So, you have no feedback now because they changed.
There's, there's no opportunity for us as a planning commission to give feedback on that, on that current.
There'll be another supervisor's meeting before you have another one of you guys.
I'm sorry?
There'll be another supervisor's meeting before you even have.
Another planning commission meeting, yes.
Do you know anything, I mean.
So, I, I was under the impression that we were supposed to discuss it tonight, but I guess I was misinformed.
It's, it wasn't placed on the agenda as far as I'm concerned. It wasn't something that we were directed to review.
Even though we received emails regarding it.
I, I think that was just a courtesy copy.
Okay, I just wanna be clear on what, what we're being instructed to do. So, we're not being asked to do any reviews before the public hearing.
I assume that, because Gretchen is not here to have that discussion, that it's not a formal discussion that we're having on the current version that was proposed by the Board of Supervisors at the last meeting.
So, we have no opportunity to provide any further feedback before? So, the planning commission will not be able to comment on what the supervisors or whatever is going to be discussed at the public hearing?
As, as, as a, as a body.
I mean, I know.
Individually, we can, you know, we all have opportunities as residents to make our feelings, thoughts and feelings known.
Right.
But as a, but as a recommending body, no, we're not gonna have an opportunity to provide feedback on the current proposed version of the ordinance.
Probably kick us to the curb, whatever you is recommend, but can you enlighten me? What did you, without me reading all that, what was your, real quick? I don't want you to read the whole, not to read the whole thing.
I mean, essentially, we provided some constructive comments related to definitions, related to updating some of the information, asking for information on what, what the proposal was. We, we talked about setbacks and we were kind of in agreement that the, the 1,000-foot and the 2,500-foot setbacks from schools was a nice middle ground and a balance. We talked about noise for a little while, wanted to, you know, get some more information on that. But really, there, there were a lot of editorial comments where we were providing suggestions of how we would update the document if that was the ordinance that they were gonna go forward with. And so, that's all written in to the notes or the minutes that are part of the public record that we approved tonight.
Okay, so you just sorta didn't agree with them.
We, so we do what we always do and we, we provide, you know, constructive recommendations and suggestions on how we would make edits to or, or update the document. And those are the recommendations we made. So, we agreed in some parts, we disagreed in other parts.
Right, and a lot, a lot of the feedback was more, you know, anytime you're writing a document like that, you know, the more eyes you get on it, you know, the, the more opportunity to get, to get proper feedback. Somebody. to get, to get proper feedback. Somebody knows what they mean when they write it, but then when somebody else reads it, you know, you know, three people could read it and have three different interpretations of what was written there. So, you know, th- those were a lot of things where we gave feedback and said, you know, we think you need to clarify this, or we, or we see that there's a contradiction between what's being said here and said there. But a lot of those, a lot of that feedback was, became moot, once they decided to go forward and, with, go in the other direction.
So, don't you think you should have another, I mean, I know you're a recommending body, and like I say, I know what they're going to do with it, but for public record, don't you think it would have been a good idea to have another session with you guys before they?
You know, I, I think that's more of a Gretchen question on, on, but I, to my knowledge, I don't think there's any legal requirement for us to.
Well, I mean, part of what I'm getting illegal, a lot of stuff they've been doing is illegal with.
Typically, we do, so I don't know the reason why, in this particular case, we're not being asked, but typically, before items go before the supervisors, they ask for our recommendations.
Okay, well, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that, and, and if it was formally on the agenda, I'm sure we'd have a discussion, and, and we'd make some recommendations. We've been asked to make recommendations, and I think we've done so constructively as a body, at least on three different occasions, with the many different versions of the ordinance that have been presented to us, and the many different maps. But I think in this case, the unfortunate part is, is we haven't been asked to, to do so.
Sort of, sort of nullifies your job.
Well, and, and, you know, I, I'll say, I'm not that, you know, I'm, I'm not one of those five members, so I, I can't speak to their thought process at this point, but, you know, it's also, you know, completely possible that the, that where they ended up, that there was a lot of feedback that they took from us to get to where they're at, at this point. How, you know, you provide feedback, and what it gets done with that feedback, you don't always have control over. So, you know, in, in that regard, you know, we, we do our part, we're asked to review that, we, we give feedback on it. I'd like to think that some of the feedback we gave found its way into whatever ended up being the final version of what it was. Whether, whether it really was or wasn't, you know, you know, we did, we did what was being asked of us.
Well, at least I have a, at least we're on public now, other, you know, other than pretty much got your presentation over there.
Yeah.
All right, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing else on the agenda, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second the motion.
Meeting adjourned at 7:54.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Christie.
Thank you.
Drive safe.
Donate to Washington County Community Foundation, yes, guys. Pick Horizon Foundation, search for candidate bill in Horizon Foundation. You can do it, five minutes flush. Thanks.
Thanks.